Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In all wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first, public invited to be heard. Speak, they should not place their lists, who do not place their names on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So now we have the approval of the August 12th meeting. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move approval of the minutes of the August 12th meeting.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, there was one that was sent out to you today. We've added Resolution R 2014-78 regarding an IGA with the state for the Longmont flood recovery to your consent agenda. It will be item 9H, and I'll read that into the record when we get there.
Okay. Is there a report for a signal manager? No report, Mayor, council. Okay. So we'll go first call, public invited to be heard. When you come down, please state your name and address for the record, and the first person is Gordon Phebo.
Longmont Council Gordon Phebo, 2639 Falcon Drive, Longmont. May I ask some members, I'm here to encourage you to approach your score notes to defend the Longmont Home Wheel Charter. You can fulfill your obligations to the citizens of Longmont by picking up the Boulder County District Court's summary judgment over invalidating Article 16 of the Charter. Since you have previously heard my thoughts on this matter, I did not intend to speak tonight. However, after reading information in your packet, I decided it is important to address you again. My impression of your council communication is that it was written in such a manner as to maximize the ease of rationalizing a decision to capitulate to the oil and gas industry and not appeal. I make this observation because of three items in the communication. One, the status recommendation to fund expense of an appeal from the general fund, thus causing the defense of the Charter to compete with other general fund priority items. Two, intending information regarding the defense of Longmont City Charter with information from an irrelevant third columns court decision. And three, and maybe most important, the implication that if you fail to defend the Home Wheel Charter, our house, our future, our Longmont, an interviewer in the case will appeal it all the way to the Supreme Court. All the city council members has sworn to, an oath, to defend our Charter. I believe it would be an enormous slap in the face to all, to thousands of Longmont voters if you do not appeal and defend the Home Wheel Charter. There are some things you cannot outsource. During a budget priority discussion last Tuesday, mandatory services were considered priorities number one. Defending the Home Wheel Charter appears to have been, appears to have the most compelling mandate of all. Each of you was required to take an oath to defend the Charter before you were allowed to be seated as a council member. That seems to establish it as the clear number one priority for budget resources. I encourage you to appeal this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gordon. Please, I'm about to ask. Um, Rod Bruski.
Good evening, councilmember. Rod Bruski, 83, 81, East County 9th Road. I'm here tonight just to point out one thing. In the Colorado State Constitution, in one of the paragraphs, it says that our government derives from the people. That is part of your oath that you're supposed to do. You know, when I come into this town, the community I love, it says Longmont, an all-American city. Now, I think a lot of people, when they hear the words "all-American," it invokes provision of freedom, liberty, and democracy. As we have seen in the past few weeks, the ideals of democracy have been compromised by our congressmen, by our state government, which is basically operating as an oligarchy. I think it is your obligation, if you do believe in the fundamentals of a democracy, is to stand for democracy. This ban has become more than just a ban on hydraulic fracturing. It has become a statement of democracy for and by the people. And I think we're all proud Americans here, and I think we all would agree that many, many of our proud, you know, veterans, I think about my dad, who was a World War II veteran, he fought for freedom and democracy for and by the people and not for the rights of corporations. So I'm really encouraging you guys to think about that this is more of a matter of principle than it is about a ban on fracking. It's about standing up for America. It's a standing up for the basic principles. One of our founding fathers, Thomas Jefferson, wrote in his memoirs in 1779 that he feared for a rise of absolutism that was more onimous than the British rule, which we overthrew in the revolution. I think this is a lesson that he was telling us to this day, that the revolution will never end, and we need to always stand guard and stand up for democracy for and by the people. So I certainly hope that you guys will make the right decision and realize this is, this is about the principles of democracy. It's not about a ban on fracking. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we just hold the applause down, please? I mean, we've got about two pages here to go through. I mean, I appreciate that the citizens are out here and are engaged in our public process here, and I really do appreciate. I love the citizens of Longmont. The next person up is Dick Montague.
Yes, I am Dick Montague, 1601 Great Western Drive, Unit F2 in Longmont. I very much appreciate that last presentation, but I have one that's much shorter. There are basically two groups of people in this audience. Those associated with the oil and gas industry, who generally support fracking even close to homes, and those not associated with the oil and gas industry, who generally oppose fracking close to homes. Who should you believe? Let's compare this to another conflict. My last name begins with a letter M. If I were to propose a tax on all Longmont residents whose last name does not start with M, with the proceeds paid to all residents whose last name does start with M, and argue that this would improve the Longmont economy, would you believe me? I don't think you're that gullible. So are you gullible enough to believe the arguments in favor of fracking close to residences presented by those who will profit from it? Are you that gullible? We will soon find out. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Rules are procedure. For those attending council meetings shall refrain from disruptive, vulgar, abusive language, applause, hell, heckling, or other actions that interfere with the orderly function of the council. The chair may take reasonable steps to maintain order and dignity of the council meetings. Applause is not appropriate during public invited to be heard, so please refrain.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Anna Hopperstead, and I am the Executive Director of the Boulder County AIDS Project at 515 Kimbark Suite 100 in Longmont. I'm here tonight to share information about the economic impact of nonprofits in Boulder County, specifically the impact in Longmont. This report identifies the amount of economic activity that occurs across Boulder County generated by human service nonprofits. I am here as a member of the Human Service Alliance and St. Brain Community Council. These two nonprofit organizations feel it important to share this information with you. According to the CULEED School of Business, $255 million of economic activity in the human service sector occurs locally in Boulder County. A significant percentage of that economic activity takes place in Longmont. The report shows 53 nonprofit organizations providing human services in Longmont contribute in many ways to the city's economy. Through the gainful employment of Longmont residents who are paid salaries and benefits, through state and federal funds that are brought into the local economy by nonprofits, and through the savings to precious municipal infrastructures due to interventions that reduce the costs on important community institutions such as police, hospitals, and schools. The nonprofit sector is responsible for bringing value to Boulder County that is on par with the recreation and utility industries and that help to bridge the gap of unmet human needs for shelter, mental health care, food, childcare, and youth services. Nonprofits take funds they receive from city and county government and leverage these funds with their own resources to provide a significant amount of expanded economic activity across the county. For example, the Boulder County AIDS Project brings in over $500,000 in state and local funding to provide services to persons who are living with HIV or at risk of HIV infection. By serving Longmont residents who are HIV-positive with these funds, BCAP is able to reduce not only homelessness in Longmont, but also reduce the transmission of HIV by ensuring HIV-positive persons are able to achieve an undetectable viral load by staying in care and maintaining their health and stability. Our HIV prevention services help to reduce the transmission of HIV to the benefit of the entire community. Federal funds provided by the state for persons living with HIV are used to pay rent to Longmont landlords, buy food in Longmont grocery stores, and assist with high medical costs of HIV treatment to Longmont pharmacies. This report is not yet finalized, but we wanted to share this important information with you. If you're interested in hearing more, please feel free to contact myself or other members of the Human Service Alliance or the St. Brain Community Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Vasman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'm Joe Vasman, 3414 Lakeview Circle, where I own the service rights. Thank you. I'd also like to point out one other item in the communication today that seems to favor a distension one way or the other, and that is the map that's included in the communication, which is based on Longmont's regulations that are in fact simply regulations, can be challenged by the state at any time regardless of what the court is deciding right now, and can be changed by council at any time. What I'm saying is that the regulations are not, in my mind, by any means equivalent to the desire of the Longmont citizens to have the Charter Amendment reflect a prohibition of fracking within the city. Longmont's Charter Amendment 16 establishes a public policy that favors protection from health, safety, and environmental risks over the development of mineral resources. Whether public, public policy should be changed in that manner is a question for the legislature or a different court. 60% of Longmont's citizens have voted that health, safety, and environment are our top priority. A rigorous defense of the Charter is now required to sustain that priority. Judge Mallard has explicitly shown us the way and given us the opportunity. The policy to protect our health, safety, and environment must now be taken to a different court. Thank you.
Mark Osborne, 937 Danny's Court. I just found out in the last day or so that the decision was to be made about appealing the legal decision that invalidated the fracking ban. I suspect you'd have a much larger crowd if this agenda were more broadly known. Early on in this process, this council chose to keep fracking further away from homes and schools than the state law required. And the first thing I want to do is thank you for that decision. The citizens of Longmont took an even stronger stand and banned it altogether, and I want to thank the citizens of Longmont for that vote. I think that was a very strong and clear statement of what this city wants. And I also thank the Longmont citizens for engaging in our democracy. I feel disappointed, but not at all surprised, that corporations and those who seek profit first would challenge a clearly democratic action and the voice of the citizens of this city. I believe it is critical to stand up for the citizens' decision to ban fracking in Longmont, and I strongly encourage you to do that in the greatest way possible. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilmembers. My name's Deb Roberts, and I live at 2340 Alpine Drive in Erie. I'm the Executive Director of Alternatives for Youth that's located 249th Avenue here in Longmont. As many of you know, Alternatives for Youth has been serving Longmont at-risk youth and their families for over 30 years. I, like Anna, am a member of the St. Brain Community Council and the Human Service Alliance. I, like Anna, am a member of the St. Brain Community Council and the Human Services Alliance of Boulder County. Both groups are comprised of human service agencies providing much-needed services to the Longmont community and throughout Boulder County. We're all aware that human service programs create an invaluable safety net for families in need, but tonight we're here to remind everyone that human service agencies are also an incredibly valuable economic contributor to Longmont and Boulder County. The CU Lead School of Business conducted a study of the economic impact of Boulder County human service nonprofits on the Boulder County economy. The study looked at 53 Boulder County human service nonprofits and reported that those 53 agencies contributed $255 million in economic activity. That included 2,147 jobs, $124 million in wages, and within the Boulder County economy. The economic activity is translated into expenditures on housing that could be renting or purchasing, retail purchase, transportation, entertainment, other disposable income expenditures, employment, and in wages. The nonprofit human services sector totaled $142 million of the $19 billion local economy in 2011. This activity was only slightly smaller than that of the arts, entertainment, recreation industry, and the utility industry. So in plain English, this means that the nonprofit human service industry is adding value to Boulder County on par with recreation and utilities. In 2011, the human service nonprofits in Boulder County provided more than $167 million in services to the local community. These services improved the quality of life for residents by bridging gaps between unmet needs of residents for shelter, health care, mental health care, food, childcare, and youth services. The total local governmental support, which includes certainly the county government, City of Boulder, and $1.1 million from you all to support the nonprofits. The human service nonprofit sector leveraged local government support into $167 million in services and $255 million of economic activity for Boulder County. Human service agencies are not only proud to provide essential services to the families in our community, but we're also very proud to be a vital economic factor for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Bassman.
Mayor and Council, I'm Shelley Bassman. I live at 3414 Lakeview Circle in Longmont, where I have the other half of the surface rights. I'm trying to write something down, but sorry, this is coming from my heart and from two years, three years now of working with this issue. Oil and gas development used to be a single little well. You know what they look like. They're in none of your ads, too. That had to be carefully located on top of this anti-climate truck, the material, the hydrocarbons. That is not the case anymore. It has morphed courtesy of new technologies into a heavy industrial industry of toxic materials. Colorado, yeah. That is the preview of locating those industries is the preview of local government, period. That the state or anyone that can spot them into neighborhoods, heavy toxic industry is outrageous. That policy needs to be changed. Now, as a bill term, it's probably fine that the state regulated what was oil and gas extraction, what it used to be, but it is not that anymore. So this is a local control issue and a democratic issue. And it's also a lot of and and doped in terms of resources to put forward our beliefs. I urge you to take this, the lower court decision, to a higher court. It's policy, policy needs to be, the trial is not to be heard by higher courts, and the policy needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Dyke. It should be followed by Ruby Bowman.
Hello, my name is Karen Dyke. I live at 1412 Whitehall Drive, Unit B. I got an alert recently that said it was a high pollution day. It made me realize that I am now afraid of the air. The air used to be a benign thing. It was hot or cold, windy or still, dry or humid. Now it frightens me with toxic VOCs, ozone, CO2, and global warming. When you can smell the change and see the haze when you look towards the mountain, you realize what we've lost. I think our politics also suffers from dirty air. After the ballot initiatives intended to mitigate harm from fracking were pulled in August, when so many held such high hopes, I realized I had been too naive in taking for granted that citizen voices would be heard. I am asking you tonight to hear our voices. The lawsuit against the ban must continue to be fought by the city. The citizens of this community voted this ban into the city charter. You have all sworn to protect that charter. Please don't fail in this obligation. We know that the governor promised to drop the lawsuit against the city. Then we heard it was only the one on regulations. I heard the audio tape of the COGC C hearings and was proud of you for speaking up. What we know, however, is that this lawsuit can be filed at any time, and that's the regulations lawsuit. We also know that KOGA and TOP will continue with that suit. I am now not naive enough to believe that the state won't resume that lawsuit as well. Having these two layers of protection has served us well. You must vote to continue defending the ban. It is difficult when facing challenges to not give up, just move to another state and let the oil and gas industry frack the whole state. I could easily move, but I won't give in. This is my home. This is my heir. This is my democracy. It is time to say you will continue to support the will of the citizens and defend this lawsuit. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. I am a Longmont resident, and I voted for the charter amendment to ban fracking in Longmont. And I am here this evening to urge you to appeal the district court's decision that invalidated the ban. Hydraulic fracturing, a loosely regulated heavy industrial activity, has no place in our city and open space. I reviewed the map you have in your packet, which shows the properties within Longmont that may possibly be fracked, many of which are city open space lands. I, as well as other citizens, twice voted to tax ourselves so that we could have an open space program and could leave a legacy for our children and future generations. With that money, we bought land as outlined in the open space criteria of the ballot language for district parks, conservation of range, agricultural lands, aquifer recharge area, surface waters, for urban shaping buffers and trails, and for preservation of natural areas, wildlife habitat, wetlands, agriculture, and visual corridors, to name a few. Nowhere in the ballot language did I see fracking as one of the criteria. I believe if it is allowed, if it is allowed to occur, it will destroy the open space attributes of these properties in which millions of dollars have been invested by our community for preservation. The vision of our open space program, as stated in the city's website, is as follows. One, connecting people with our natural resources, meaning trails connecting people to our public lakes, streams, visual corridors, et cetera. Two, respecting our environment. Three, defining our community. Four, balancing our growth. Five, treasuring our children's future. And six, protecting what we value. You have a duty to protect and honor the vision of our open space program and the fracking ban charter amendment. Both work hand in hand. It would be a serious blow to our open space program if these lands are fracked. One only has to go to me to see the devastation that may be instored for us. I urge you to protect what Longmont citizens value the most: our health, our environment, quality of life, our children's future, and our open space. Please vote to appeal. Thank you.
Bill Eichenberry? You can correct me if I butchered your last one.
Okay, I'll correct you. It's Bill Eichenberry. I'm, first of all, I want to thank the opportunity to be here tonight and address the council. I'm Bill Eichenberry. I live in Lakewood, but I'm very much of the opinion that you ought to appeal the Mallard decision. But before I do that, I would simply like to make some other comments. First of all, you hear 24/7 about the values of fracking. You hear it on TV, you hear it on radio, you see it in the press, and you hear how safe, how regulated with the oversight that comes with this whole process. And I can tell you, council people, that's far from the truth. The truth is that because of a little law that Congress passed back in 2005, they called the Energy Policy Act of 2005, industry, the oil and gas industry, got a complete exemption on complying with virtually every federal law there is that would deal with the regulation and the oversight of fracking. That being, they simply got an exemption on the Clean Water Act, the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Clean Air Act, the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, NEPA, and CIRCLA, which is the Superfund Act, and we all know a little bit about CIRCLA as we worked with the Superfund project down there with Dow Chemical. But perhaps more importantly, they also have an exemption on the identification of the chemicals they're using in the fracking process. We do know some of the chemicals. EPA has made some studies, and they come up with some idea of some of the chemicals that they have identified. The fracking processes have entered into the drinking water in several places, including in Wyoming, and New York, Pennsylvania, and Ohio. But that being, they found the four main chemicals that we are very much concerned about and would lead to all sorts of issues in terms of health issues. They've been benzene, toline, ethylbenzene, and xylene. These are what they call indoctrin disruptors, and they have been, they're well-known, and they're well-placed, and they're known to cause birth defects, neurological disorders of several magnitudes, and cancer.
Sorry, your three minutes are up under red button goes up.
I would just add, anyway, there are some major concerns here, but I would certainly recommend that you appeal this, and also, and I'll leave here in just a second.
Thanks.
I would also think, would ask that you
You only get three minutes.
Strictly, you moved to, on this hit-and-loop or pause decision, that you object to that, and maybe nothing's going to happen anymore on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a lot of names to go through, so, you know, I'd like to give everybody more, but our rule is three minutes. And you know, the reason why we don't like clapping or booing and stuff, because it would, if you have like an opposing position and come down, then you're going to feel a little bit intimidated. So that's the reason why we have these laws, so people feel comfortable no matter what side of the argument that you're on. So we'd kind of like to follow the rules if we can and try to be as less, as respectful as we can. Next person up is Ann Harper. Ann Harper?
We don't
No. We don't do that.
We don't bank time.
Next person then would be Charles Berger. Charles Berger?
She can't pass. She wants to speak.
She may have to forfeit her time.
She can come down?
She can come down and speak for three minutes, but you can't bank time to someone else. No. No. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ann Harper, and I live at 517 County Road 18 in Longmont. And I have been here before, a couple of years ago. And I was part of the whole process to bring the vote to the citizens of Longmont. And I participated in canvassing, and petitioning, and coming here, and grueling meetings till 11:30, which you were all, most of you were here for as well. And I thank you for sitting there and listening and being a part of that, because it's very intense, a lot of emotions about this issue. And all the people who have just gone before me have articulated the issues so incredibly well, and that's not my forte. What I want to do here is just tell you that cheesecloth is what came to mind for me tonight. When I read my email that just appeared in my box about this, and I'm thinking, you know, there'd be 500 people here maybe if other people had gotten it way before, and cheesecloth came to mind because, first of all, it's a little bit opaque, that there's just, the situation isn't transparent about what's going on, about why you guys are going to vote, how you vote. I just want you to vote with transparency in your heart. If you guys would all vote from your heart, and the other reason cheesecloth came to mind was, it has no spine. Think about it. It's just this globular stuff. And the citizens of Longmont, 60% of them, came, stood at a voting booth, and voted with their spine straight, with their beliefs. And I'm hoping that you guys will honor that with your oath that you took with your spine straight. Because Longmont is a beautiful city. I drive in from the east every day, almost every day, and I look, and it's green, and it's beautiful. And we should preserve that. Do everything we can to preserve it. And I think the citizens of Longmont have spoken, and I hope you will use not cheesecloth integrity in your vote, but a true spine. Thank you.
Charles Berger. He'll be followed by Joan Peck.
Hi, my name is Charles Berger. I live at 1553 Drake Street in Longmont. What I have to say is real simple. Letting ourselves be exposed to the chemicals that we know are used in fracking is a bad idea. Letting our children and the generations after them be exposed is just criminal, and I think history will see it that way. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Joan Peck.
Good evening, Mayor, Coons, and Council members. Almost everything I've wanted to say has already been said. I know you're probably pretty glad about that. My name's Joan Peck. I'm at 1935 Spruce Avenue, and I'm here to speak to you about the vote you're taking concerning the defense of our city charter. What has already been said is that we are a government by and for the people, and we're a council of the people. Elected to represent us to defend our home rule through the city charter, to listen and act upon the will of the people. Unlike other countries, we did not go out and strap bombs to our race, around our race, or shoot our rifles in the air. We were armed only with clipboards and pens, and we exercised our democratic right of a government by the people. We went to the streets, reminded citizens that they do have a voice, and asked them if they wanted to be able to vote on the health, safety- if they wanted to be able to vote on the health, safety, welfare, and property values of their city. The answer was a resounding yes. Thus, amend, the amending of our city charter to ban hydraulic fracturing within the city limits of Longmont. It is this very same democratic process of the people that put all of you in the seats you're occupying tonight. It doesn't matter what industry or entity dislikes our city charter. It's not right that we're told our actions to amend the charter were illegal. It's our constitutional prerogative. You have sworn to uphold and defend our charter, and that's what you must do. Whomever votes not to appeal our charter amendment to the appellate court in higher tells us they do not believe in a government by the people and for the people, nor do they honor their sworn duty to defend the city charter. Therefore, those council persons should not even be occupying a council seat. There are only two reasons why you would vote no on this issue. First, you think our oil and gas regulations are as good as a ban. That's an erroneous thought. The 750-foot setbacks in the regulations do not remove fracking with, from within the city limits. There's a clause in the regulations which allows council to decrease or le, lift the 750-foot setback if an oil company makes that request. You can see this actually if you drive 66, which I'm sure all of you have. It is a practice in Colorado that developers buy swaths of land, both surface and mineral rights, and are selling mineral rights or leasing them to the oil and gas company. Is that illegal? Of course not. Do we want to have, um, construction within the city? Absolutely. The problem is, the people who occupy those homes do not know about, or have not read through their documents enough to know that as soon as their houses are occupied, they're going to have compounds of oil wells next to their development. You can see this on 66. That is why the regulations will not work. If they want their 750-feet setbacks lifted, there are at least three or four of you on this council that would do that. Thank you.
August Miller?
Good evening. My name's August Miller. My address is 923 Alta Street. I'd like to thank you for, uh, taking us this far, and I'd also like to encourage you to take it a little bit further by appealing Judge Mallard's decision to a higher court, and then some. I'd also like to take this moment, uh, to express a rationale that I haven't yet heard. Science requires an unflinching and honest testing of theories. Right now, there's a vast marketing campaign being conducted by the oil and gas industry positing scientific claims of their practices as safe. A fracking well can be fracked up to 10 times during its productive life. That's up to 40 years. These claims of safety are illegitimate, as no science has been, or has seen, the complete lifetime of one fracking well. Forty years is a long time to wait. It's a long time's wait for complete scientific study, but it's also a long time to wait as an investor in a community, as a neighbor, as a community member, as a farmer, as a Republican, Democrat, Independent, whomever you are. It's a long time to defer the productive years of your citizens' lives. This activity has the potential to displace indiscriminately. What that means for you is a loss of your base. It means a loss of our culture. Behind you, you see a motto, "You belong in Longmont." So we all belong here to you. So you belong in Longmont if you appeal Judge Mallard's decision to a higher court. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Michael Belmont?
If I say I'm from Lakewood, do I get four minutes?
No.
No, okay. Michael Belmont, 841 Tenacity Drive. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Council members, I would like to speak, go figure, to the question of whether we will appeal the district court's decision to dismiss out of hand our Article 16 of Longmont's Constitution. And since I spoke on the subject two weeks ago here, to avoid, uh, redundant redundancy, I think I'll just say one little piece of what I, I'll recap one thing, and that is that the actual summary judgment of Judge Mallard's, uh, case wrote, or she, and I quote, "Longmont is essentially asking this court to establish a public policy that favors protection from health, safety, and environmental risks over the development of mineral resource. Whether public policy should be changed in that manner is a question for a different court," end quote. Thus, she clearly is saying that the only way we will get a fair trial in this case and honor the people of Longmont is to appeal to a different court, AKA a higher court. I know most of you council members personally, and I can say with confidence that to a person, you can be characterized as persistent and determined. After all, even if I didn't know you, it took persistence and determination to get through a campaign, an election, and attain that office. Good for you, and thank you. The making of a bright city like Longmont requires many things. Prominent among them, persistence and determination. Indeed, little of value in this world is accomplished without those two requisite ingredients. Allow me to quote Calvin Coolidge, "Nothing in this world," I quote, "can take the place of persistence. Talent will not. Nothing is more common than unsuccessful men with talent. Genius will not. Unrewarded genius is almost a proverb. Education will not. The world is full of educated dwellings." Persistence and determination alone are omnipotent," end quote. I would now like to invite all of those here in the audience that are supportive of appealing to quietly stand, because some of you will not have the opportunity to speak, but all of you came here to express your solidarity. Wow. We stand here excited about the prospect that you, council members, and we, the people, shoulder to shoulder, will once again here tonight show that Longmont indeed has a spirit of persistence and determination.
Thank you. Next, uh, Kay, Kay Fissinger?
My name is Kay Fissinger. I reside at 2199 Creekside Drive in Longmont, and I am president and chair of our Longmont's Board of Directors. On August 5th, you heard many of us speak to the issue of appealing the district court's ruling on the Longmont shorter amendment to ban fracking and its waste products in our city. Others have spoken tonight. I will try to avoid repetition. I'm sure that all of you have spent private time and time in executive sessions about the hostile lawsuits that are attempting to bully the people of Longmont. One would expect this from an industry with absolutely no interest in the public. They engage with communities, and particularly with local governments, to secure what they refer to as a social license to operate. That's translated to mean the ability to frac and drill anywhere, any way, anytime. The oil and gas industry will use any political scam and bogus facts that they create through academic donations, donations, and so-called studies with James Sully to prove their position. I recall some 20 years ago hearing the phrase, "Garbage in, garbage out." That's what applies when you cook the books with your initial assumptions. Those of us who worked so tirelessly to pass this ban, and the people of Longmont who passed our charter amendment, 60% of the vote, have given you a directive as their representatives. They want this ban to stand and expect you to do everything necessary to assure that. They don't know the consequences, all of them, when they voted yes on question 300. They heard all kinds of threats and hyperbole from the industry to the tune of almost half a million dollars. Our community was not uninformed and naive, as the industry likes to characterize. Since our state government also has no respect for the people of Colorado and is willing to sue them with their own money, uh, there is no reason to trust them on either one of the lawsuits. They know how to lie and double-cross just as well the oil and gas industry. The people of Longmont look to you tonight to genuinely act as representatives of the people of Longmont and vote wholeheartedly to appeal the district court's legally inaccurate and unjust ruling. Thank you for your time.
Martha McPherson?
Yes, my name is Martha McPherson. I'm at 4809 Brandon Creek Drive. Well, the fact that we have to defend our democracy and pursuit of a better life at this point in time in the history of our republic is outrageous. The insanity of this greed and utter disregard for the health of our environment takes my breath away literally. We are facing a pivotal point of deciding whether we continue on the path of wanton destruction of our fragile ecosystem, or find alternatives of wind and solar energy that are ready to be embraced and utilized. We just need the political and economic will to implement our knowledge. The voice of informed citizens is clear. We do not accept the corporate dictate that fracking is safe. The more data that is gathered, the more dangerous its reality. You have been chosen to represent the voice of the people, start representing us. Corporations are not the voice of reason. They are the voice of environmental treason. If you follow their demands, you betray us all and your own future. So think of your children. If you can't think of our children, think of your children. Thank you.
Brian Goverson? He'll be followed by Kimber Goverson.
Hello, council members. I'm here. Uh, my name is Brian Goverson, and I live at, uh, 310 Judson Street. I'm speaking tonight about the council members considering the purpose to reverse the ban on fracking within our city limits. My concern is that overturning this ban, of course, the more concerning is the impact your decision will ultimately have our democratic process, our government by the people, for the people. I'm concerned that if you overturn this ban, you're telling future generations as well as corporations that our rights don't matter. I'm concerned that we are minimizing how precious these rights are, and we are in essence saying that the price of democracy has a price tag on it. Please remember that our freedom and our democratic rights are priceless, that many generations before us gave their lives to provide and protect these freedoms, these rights. So I speak to you as a citizen that voted to ban fracking here in Longmont, that we are with you and support you if you're willing to stand and protect our freedom, that I will commit to supporting you any way I can to ensure that not only is this ban honored, but that our freedoms and democratic rights are preserved for our community and all America, because we are being watched. You are not alone in this lawsuit, this fight. We, as a community, chose to protect our rights and freedom. We can do this creatively without the need to succumb to the fear of litigation, and I ask you, our elected officials, to ask for our help as well and bring a collective creative solution to this important decision. That's why you were chosen to bring your collective creativity and teamwork to meet the issues and challenges of Longmont. Um, on a side note, I'm a native of Colorado, and I've lived here, you know, my whole life. And, um, what I've seen happen here in Longmont in the last year or two with the fracking, it breaks my heart. And, um, I know my grandparents who had their parents immigrate here from Italy and Poland would feel the same way. And as my son sits here in this audience, I don't want him, this to be his memory of Colorado, what's going on on 66, because he sees it, and he knows what's going on too. So I'm confident you guys will support, will support us and our, our choice. Thank you.
Thanks for your confidence. Kimber? Goverson?
Good job. My name is Kimber Goverson, um, and I currently reside at 310 Judson Street here in Longmont. Um, I first want to express my gratitude to the members of the council for getting us this far. Um, I know that you have worked, and you have listened, and you have supported us to make it thus far, and I'm grateful to be standing here where we still have a voice, and our communities are not so blessed. I am certainly among the many community members who are here who voted to keep fracking out of our community. I am a mother, and I'm also a healthcare provider in our community. I am strongly invested in the health and the well-being of our community as well as our citizens, and that is why I'm speaking tonight. I speak tonight to urge you to continue to represent the voice of the community members by upholding our vote to ban fracking that was voted upon by the citizens of this community last November. I do appreciate the reality that as a community, we are limited in our ability to financially endure lengthy legal battles on this issue. However, I also believe that our greater responsibility is to uphold the democratic process and to protect the rights of the citizens, to be a government for the people and by the people. And if this vote is overturned, it negates the very democratic principles on which our nation was founded and for which our forefathers fought. The community of Longmont has spoken, and I urge you to consider this as you make your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Blackburn?
Judith Blackburn, 3724 Oakwood Drive. Mayor Coombs and council. You're getting another earful. I have a vision I'd like you to consider. Let's assume it's the year 2016, and the Longmont lawsuits have both been settled. Doubtless other political factors we can't foresee have come into play. Perhaps the soon-to-be-announced Blue Ribbon Commission has actually recommended some useful recommendations, but legislature has done its bit. Meanwhile, by 2016, the development of renewables has completely redirected our national energy goals and opened up the economy to new kinds of jobs. All these divisions and arguments we had back in 2012, 2013, and 2014 seem part of a far distant past. Does it matter what the Longmont legacy is in all of this? I think it does, and I think we all have cause to be mighty proud. In 2012, our little city became the first in Colorado to succeed with a voter-initiated ban on fracking. We ran a smart campaign and won against great financial odds. Between 2012 and 2016, we and you defended the ban at various levels through the court system, and here I must commend the city's legal team, who have done a tremendous job so far, again, against great odds. Simultaneously, while all this was going on, climate change was becoming real, and water was running low in the West. Everyone was realizing how interconnected all these happenings are. When other communities followed Longmont's lead, the industry started to run scared. All of a sudden, Colorado became- All of a sudden, Colorado became ground zero on energy policy in the national news. But you and we stood strong. Thanks to a good many people in this room, we are where we are today in 2012, 2014, excuse me. And with luck, we'll all be here in 2016, proud of ourselves and proud of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. James Kenworthy?
James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. I have my pen and I have my clipboard, so I guess I'm equipped. I'm going to read from the 14th Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or amenities of citizens of the United States. That went by pretty fast, so I'm going to read it again. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or amenities of citizens of the United States. So what's an immunity? Protection from something especially unwelcome or harmful. Now, I can't think of anything so close to us that's any more unwelcome or harmful than You swore to uphold the Constitution and you swore to uphold the city charter. This is a health issue. It was a health issue when we started and it's still a health issue. The industry would like us to forget that and this state government would like us to forget that. Breathing these toxic gases shrinks the alveolar bags in the lungs. The younger the lungs, the more the danger. So does anybody here have any children? I think some people do and they're pretty small. So how close do you want fracking operations to be to your house? That's the question. I've got a lot of other things written down here, but I'm not going to say them. So you are morally and ethically bound to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Eve Palmer?
Eve Palmer, 2129 Squire Street, Longmont. I'm afraid I'm going to be a little bit repetitive here. We are at a crossroads in our survival as united and safe community, a community in which each of you would actually like to continue living. The COGCC demonstrated their flagrant disregard for our safety and health with their refusal to drop the Longmont regulation suit with prejudice. Even these weak regulations with possible exemptions to 750-foot setbacks weren't going to work for them. I listened to you plead with them, arguing that talk was on board with you. Still, they refused to budge. I heard the shock and disappointment in your voices. They have no regard for our community. They have no appreciation for the democracy, for democracy and the will of the people. The COGCC has backed you into a corner. They and the governor may try to pretend that some sort of compromise took place, but we know the truth. You are left with one path to demonstrate to the COGCC that you won't just buckle against their slightest pressure. That path is the appeal on behalf of the full ban the city residents overwhelmingly approved. If you don't follow through, you'll be sending the COGCC, the industry, and communities across the U.S. who are impacted by gas and oil, a message that we are powerless to stand up for our communities and that the industry can at will force anything they choose on us. Whether you or COGCC think we will lose or win, this doesn't really matter. At this point, it is about demonstrating our determination to fight for our right to decide what happens in our city and stand by our charter. After what the COGCC recently pulled on us, we must not back down. We need to do this for Longmont as well as all the similarly affected communities who are watching us and rooting for us to prevail. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon?
Good evening, council members. Ellen Schelling, I live at 1026 Sixth Avenue. And thank you for this opportunity to be here and voice our views. I know this is a huge issue and tricky to work out. And as I look at it, I too see it's not just about fracking, but also about democracy and the freedom of the people to choose and govern as established in our American Constitution. And we're not alone in this. And Friday, this last Friday, August 22nd, The Times called, there's an article on a murdering city in Lafayette taking a stand in a similar situation and what they're doing to preserve the freedom of choice for its citizens, having voted to ban, also banned fracking in their community. And I'm going to be just quicky here on it. Residents of Lafayette seeking to enforce a voter-supported fracking ban filed a motion this week for a preliminary injunction against the state Governor John Hickenlooper and the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. The motion aims to prohibit the state's oil and gas industry from using the Colorado Oil and Gas Act to invalidate the town's right to self-government, which plaintiffs claim should include the ability to ban fracking. "The right to local community self-government serves as the foundation for the American system of law and is essential tenet of our Declaration of Independence and state and federal constitutions," said Thomas Lindsey of the Committee, or the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund in the drafting, who assisted in the drafting of Lafayette Community Bill of Rights. Now, we're not Lafayette, but how can we work with this in a way that works for Longmont to preserve our democratic freedom of choice? And I support you in funding an appeal and a trial if necessary to do so. Thank you.
Strider Binstone?
Strider Binstone, 951 Seventeenth Avenue, Longmont. Welcome, mayor and council. Hands up, don't shoot. You may or may not know the relevance. Citizens of this country are not supposed to be murdered by representatives of their supposedly democratic government. Longmont is facing the same thing. First person who wrote about this particular issue, Heinrich Ibsen, in 1882, wrote "An Enemy of the People." I just read it again. It's about Longmont. It's about the health and safety of the community as opposed to the absolute dominance of corporate interests and their control over the government to enforce their interests as opposed to the health and safety of the people. Now, last Tuesday night, I wasn't here. We had 500 people marched on the state Capitol, had a two or three-hour, very lively and friendly demonstration. Don't shoot. Not a single word in the press. You think we have freedom of the press? Check it out. Look and see how much you're able to find out by going through the press. Now Congressman Polis and Governor Hickenlooper said, "All right, we'll not go ahead and sue you right now. We will later if you don't go along." And we'll appoint a commission. Well, Mayor Pro Tim Bryan Bagley was appointed to a commission a year or two ago and came back and reported how that works. It was a rubber stamp just to get the people to submit to what had already been decided by the corporate interests. That is the game that is going on. Now, as far as the chemicals, yeah, maybe we can find out some of them. But what about all the VOCs that keep coming up? Are they really putting those in there? No, they're coming up from the mantle of the earth. It is a permanent process. And the methane that comes from the bottom of the coal mines, somebody didn't just put the methane down there under all that coal. It's coming from below. There is no shortage of oil and gas on this planet. They're going to find out in the next three or four years. What do they want? They want domination over all the property rights to where they can control every drop and every ounce that comes out. That is why any democratic process anywhere terrorizes the corporate dictators who want to have absolute control so that they can control our lives. And what about the poisoned water? What about the eight million gallons per well when we're in a drought and we're going to have an increasing drought? We got lucky this year, but it's coming back. Home rule for Longmont, make it work. And also home rule, there's a petition for Boulder County. Sign it. Longmont citizens.
Thank you. Kirsten Burris?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kirsten Burris and I live at 1303 Carolina Avenue. I wanted to, thanks for listening. And I wanted also to thank the citizens of Longmont for their blood, sweat, and tears for getting this up, the fracking, the ban on fracking in our city. I know some of those folks personally and I know that they have spent just countless hours. And so I want to thank them for bringing this important issue up and out and here for us to discuss and look at and consider. I wanted to speak tonight because I really wanted it to be on record that I used my voice to urge you to stand with us. We are standing with you if you vote to continue the ban on fracking within our city limits. And not necessarily because you believe in fracking personally or you don't believe in fracking, but because you believe in democracy. And I think that's the key and that's the bigger issue. I see that we're in a bind. You know, how do we have a government for the people, by the people, of the people when we go through the democratic process and we say what we want and then we get sued? That's a tough one. And so I understand that Longmont doesn't have the funds to fight a lawsuit. I mean, that's a real tricky situation that you guys are in and are facing. And so I want to say I understand that. And if you guys stand with us, we will be standing with you. And you're not doing this by yourselves. So, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Barbara Patton?
Hello, council members. I'm here. I'm Barb Patton. I live at 1010 Sixth Avenue in Longmont. And I also, like our last speaker, want to thank you for your defense of the City of Longmont Charter and the voice of the people. And I too acknowledge that we're in somewhat of a bind because of the financial resources that are needed to appeal. And the question to me seems to be, is it going to be the voice of the people or the voice of whoever has the most money? And that to me is a sad and even frightening commentary on the state of our freedom, our freedom to choose in this democracy. So how you choose to continue the work with this issue feels like a real key for our city and for the exercise of our rights and our freedom to choose. So thank you.
Thank you. Clarisco?
Well, I don't think I'm going to say what I wrote down, made notes on the past day because I'm listening to people here and...
Do you sit in San Diego Avenue?
I'm in Clarisco. I live at 1034 Red Oak Drive, sorry. So actually, I moved here recently from the relative bliss of Nalot to Longmont to make a better life with my girlfriend. And been a mixed experience because though I have in that regard made a better life with my girlfriend, I have been utterly shocked at what the hell, excuse my language, is going on up here with this, those monstrosities out there. And so I took a crash course on researching every aspect about fracking, looking at it from all different angles, you know, very thorough research. And it just seems to me that the fracking industry is an industry based on deception in every level, in every way. And from the name of their product, to make it sound like it's a good thing for us versus methane, which is 31 times as potent as carbon dioxide. I'm playing around with all kinds of numbers, facts about this and that. Then I found to my astonishment that I am a member of a group called Big Green. And everybody else in this room is a member of a group called Big Green. Now, who's Big Green? Let me see. You mean Big Oil? No, Big Green. Well, Big Green, I guess, is supposed to be all of us, rich people driving around in our margaritas, road races, and porsches, you know, just complaining about things because we feel like it because we have the luxury to do that. Now, it's interesting and it just strikes me that this kind of behavior, this kind of duplicitous behavior is, and is on a psychological level, a facet of criminal minds, bad people who are trying, when they are caught doing something bad, they reflect themselves on everybody else. Okay? We're the baddies because we're Big Green and right around the corner, we have millions and millions of dollars in the bank. Well, I don't see anybody Big Green around here and myself. I drive a 1989 Toyota pickup with rust spots on it. So I don't know, I got to explore that a little bit further. So I just think that really what it comes down to is fight it, fight it, and fight it.
Thank you. Time's up. Thank you. Hey, that ends Public Convoy to Be Heard. So you guys want to take a five-minute break?
I guess the only question is, given there's so many people here, do we want to move the agenda item 11A just to now after we come back from a break and just do it?
Okay, yeah, let's...
I think that motion, I think it's by consensus.
Okay, let's vote on that. So the motion is to move 11A in front of the consent agenda. Okay, that passes 7 to 0. Let's take a 10-minute recess. Let's take a 10-minute recess. Okay, could we bring the meeting back to order and... Hello, please take your seats. Yeah, go ahead, Mayor, this is the next item.
Your next item is, excuse me...
Can we please sit down and take your seats so we can resume our meeting?
Mayor Combs, your next item is whether to appeal the summary judgment order invalidating the charter...
Everybody quiet down.
Sorry. Now, it's whether to appeal the summary judgment order invalidating the charter restrictions prohibiting hydraulic fracturing, open pits, and certain waste disposal. Eugene May, our city attorney, will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Eugene May, Longmont City Attorney. I am here to present the item on whether or not to appeal a summary judgment order invalidating the Charter Article 16. With me is the city's legal team. I have Assistant City Attorney Dan Kramer, who was the primary author on drafting our legal argument on summary judgment. Also with me is Phil Barber. He's the city's special counsel for oil and gas and lead litigator on both of the oil and gas lawsuits. We do appear to be having a little bit of technical difficulty, so I'll just move forward without the PowerPoint, and if it catches up to me, that'd be great. So tonight, we heard plenty of public comment. We heard about two lawsuits. There's a lawsuit about the regulations that council passed in the summer of 2012. That was the subject of the COGCC motion to dismiss without prejudice with a covenant not to sue. The city is continuing to work on implementation of that motion, but that is not the subject here tonight. Tonight is the citizen passed fracking prohibition that is in Article 16 of the Charter. After my introduction, we're gonna have Assistant City Attorney Kramer present an explanation of the court's summary judgment order. After that, Phil Barber will address some issues for council's consideration on whether or not they should appeal this issue, and then we'll turn it over to council for city council discussion and direction. So as we heard, Judge Mallard issued an order on July 24th granting plaintiffs' motion for summary judgment. Just so everyone in the audience can understand the procedural posture of where we are in this case, summary judgment is a rule of procedure process by which the parties can save time and expense of having a trial if it's clear that one of the parties has no chance of winning. The standard for summary judgment is the party who makes the motion must prove that there is no genuine dispute over any material fact, and the moving party is entitled to judgment as a matter of law. So in this case, the state, county, and top operating were the plaintiffs, and therefore they had the burden of proof to meet those standards on summary judgment. The city, on the other hand, was the defendant on this motion, and our objective was to demonstrate to the court that we could show facts at trial, which under current case law would allow us to prevail in this case. It's important to realize that the city did not move for summary judgment, so under this order, the city could only lose the case, we could not win, we could survive summary judgment, and that was our objective here. When the party passed the motion, the opposing, the other party, which was us, has one opportunity to file a response. In response, we drafted a 97-page response brief and submitted 51 exhibits, including affidavits, articles, and other evidence which we thought would demonstrate to the court our primary arguments. We made four primary arguments. One, we argued that the charter is not in conflict with state law, that the state did not regulate fracking or authorize fracking. We also made the primary argument that as a matter of local concern, the City of Longmont had the authority to regulate fracking. Also, on oil and gas, the case law standard is whether or not the local regulation is in operational conflict with state law. We made the argument that our Article 16 does not materially impair or destroy the state's interest in the fair and efficient development of the resource. Finally, going towards a technical standard of the summary judgment motion, we thought we shared by unrebutted evidence that there were several issues of disputed material fact, and therefore, it would be improper for the court to grant summary judgment. As we hear from Mr. Kramer, the court disagreed with us on every one of those points.
Mayor and council, as Mr. May said, we received this order. We received it on July 24th, 17 pages long, and in short, it says that Longmont Municipal Charter Article 16 is invalid as preempted by state law. I want to go through a little bit how the court got there, her reasoning and rulings. She started by saying that the COGCC, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, has a regulatory structure for oil and gas that is comprehensive, and the comprehensive nature of that regulation is applicable to fracking. That the types of things that the city said would actually show regulation of fracking activities would actually just be micromanagement of the industry. That the commission, while not micromanaging the industry, did provide oversight, and that counted as regulation. And instead, by the city asking for further regulation, the city was just complaining that the COGCC is not doing its job to our satisfaction. Next, the court ruled that the state allows fracking, the city prohibits fracking, the city therefore prohibits what the state allows, which is a conflict under case law. That Article 16 therefore attempts to negate the very authority of the COGCC and take it upon ourselves. She said it was so clear, we forbid something that they permit, that the conflict is operational, which is a technical term in the case law, and that it's patent on its face. It's very clear, very convincing, the court found. Furthermore, the court didn't quite go all the way there, but she said that the conflict could be to such a level that the city's charter amendment is impliedly preempted by the state act, that just reading their words, in other words, the amendment is preempted. And the reason why is because she said technical regulations may be preempted under the act. Anything that Article 16 does or says, or anything that a city does or says that is technical in nature, could be preempted with regard to oil and gas. And she said the technical might be anything under the purview of a petroleum engineer, that since fracking could be said to be within the purview of petroleum engineer, it could be preempted on that basis alone. A number of other negative things about Article 16 were in the order. First of all, the judge ruled that Article 16 creates waste. Waste, according to the State Oil and Gas Act, is when a local regulation or just activity of an oil and gas operator leaves minerals in the ground when they could have otherwise been brought up. And Article 16 does that, she says. She said that Article 16 violates correlative rights. This is a little bit of an esoteric technical point, but the type of correlative rights that she was talking about were if I am a mineral rights owner and I have royalty rights to a pool of oil and gas, and my neighbor does not use the most efficient measures to access his or her oil and gas, and therefore, my royalties are less than they otherwise would have been, that's a violation of my correlative rights. She said that that's what Article 16 does. And furthermore, if that royalty owner is outside of Longmont and the oil and gas that is not being brought up as efficiently as it could be is inside of Longmont, that's an extraterritorial impact. And if a regulation has an extraterritorial impact, that goes to show that it's a matter not of local concern but of statewide concern, and therefore, more easily can be shown to be preempted under case law. She said something that was not new to our ears, which is that Article 16 results in patchwork regulation. We had argued that uniformity is not a virtue in and of itself, and we had case law there. Nevertheless, she did cite case law to say that patchwork regulation is not desirable. And she said, despite evidence that we thought we brought to the contrary, that Article 16 virtually destroys the state interest in production of oil and gas. We thought we had shown that there were other ways to bring oil and gas to the surface. There were, however, a number of positive aspects to the court's order. First of all, the court recognized that the plaintiffs more or less gave up on their argument, oral arguments, that Article 16 was a de facto ban of all oil and gas operations within the city. The plaintiffs had argued that because of Colorado Supreme Court case law from 1992, saying that a total ban on oil and gas operations by a city was impermissible, Article 16 was therefore also impermissible. The court felt, however, that it didn't need to make that determination in order to rule that Article 16 was invalid. The court said that well-location and spacing are no longer as important as they were. What she's talking about there has to do with horizontal versus vertical drilling. The 1992 decisions of the Colorado Supreme Court had said that well spacing is very important to regulate in a uniform manner at the state level, because operators need to be able to drill to reach their oil and gas. need to be able to drill to reach their oil and gas reserves, and the way to do that is you drill from the surface down to get your reserves, and we need to space that out appropriately to allow for fair development of oil and gas. However, with the advent of hydraulic fracturing and horizontal drilling, it's no longer necessary for the spacing to be so uniform. The court recognized that, didn't apply that fact, but that could be helpful to us in this case or the oil and gas regulations case going forward. She did acknowledge that no court had ever found an implied preemption of a fracking prohibition in Colorado based on the state's dominant interest in oil and gas or in fracking. And perhaps most intriguingly, the court said that she was not in a position to agree or disagree with the city's evidence of health, safety, and environmental risks. We thought that we and the environmental interveners who were intervening on our side had presented quite a lot of information showing that fracking poses risks, and that based on those risks, Article sixteen was really a matter of local concern, not a matter of statewide concern, and therefore it was within our home law authority to have that article in our charter. The court said what we were really asking her to do, however, was make a policy decision. And she basically said that that was above her pay grade, that that was a question either for the legislature or a different court, which may have been an invitation to raise this up to the next level from her. With that, one more thing. One other very positive aspect of the judge's order is that she stayed her order. Article sixteen is still in effect, it will remain in effect until at least September eleventh, which is our deadline to file a notice of appeal. And she also said that if we asked her to extend that stay for the duration of the appeal, the appeal, she would. With that, I'll turn it over to the city's special counsel, Phil Barber, Special Counsel for Oil and Gas, to discuss the council's options moving forward. She would extend the stay. Pardon me if I misspoke.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I guess I'm here like the citizens to thank you for your support in the past. As a lawyer, you hate to lose any case, and this is one which was a particularly bitter decision because of all the work that the city council, city attorney's office, and citizens have put into this case. Just by example, we, I'm not in the paperless citizens these days, so this is basically what we gave to the court when we resisted the summary judgment motion filed by COGA and the COGCC. It included, I think, twelve affidavits. We had citizens, some of whom have spoken here tonight, we included your affidavits. We had health and safety experts' affidavits that testified to the dangers of hydraulic fracturing. We presented economic analyses that said, in terms of local versus state impact, Longmont accounts for something like four one thousandths of one percent of oil and gas production in the state of Colorado. And when you balance that against the risks and the concerns of the citizens, that the local impact and the local concern in our view should win out. We presented health studies, we presented just a myriad of different bits of evidence, all with the purpose of surviving this summary judgment motion. And how do you do that in law? And we're talking a little bit about arcane legal principles, but the basic standard is if there is a disputed fact about whether this is a regulation that should be tipped towards the local side, if there's a disputed fact about whether the oil and gas commission actually does regulate hydraulic fracturing, if there's a disputed fact about whether there is a way for the oil and gas business to do business, even though there's a ban on hydraulic fracturing, then it's not for a summary judgment ruling to decide that. There needs to be a full and open hearing, and we had a two-week trial set for April of next year on those issues, and that trial has now gone away. And so the rules that lawyers operate under, under summary judgment, is that if there is a disputed fact on any of those issues, local control, operational conflict, whether there are alternatives to hydraulic fracturing, the judge doesn't make the call until she hears all the evidence. Here, she made the call before she heard the full case. And so while I cannot advise the city financially, politically, whether to appeal or not, I can say that your legal team did its very best to give us the right to have a trial on issues such as, has since nineteen ninety-two the playing field in oil and gas development changed to such an extent that it's no longer primarily an issue of statewide concern, but with a city like Longmont that accounts for so little of the state's production and the risks that are there for its citizens, should we have been given a trial on that issue? Clearly, we presented enough evidence to say that it is a matter of local concern in this day and age, much more so than it was when these two compelling cases came out by the Colorado Supreme Court. So in answer to the first question, clearly, legal counsel worked its tail off at your direction. We had the direction from you all to give this case a hundred percent. I can absolutely say we did that. So we should have gotten trial on whether this was a matter of local concern and aired the full panel plea of facts and risks and health concerns and impacts on the industry and have it come out in the wash at the end of the day. We didn't get that trial, the city didn't get that trial. The next question was, it was a really interesting kind of nugget that we discovered here. So this case was originally briefed, and we didn't have any opportunity to take what we call as lawyer's discovery from the other side. We asked Judge Mallard to give us a chance to develop our case, don't cut us off at the knees, give us a chance to at least get some factual information from the other side. So we took, she said yes, and we took a number of depositions, including the mandatory permitting for the oil and gas commission. And we felt that the evidence showed that the state does not permit or authorize fracking, it doesn't regulate how much fracking fluid or solution can be used, it doesn't regulate when it can be done, how many times it can be done, where it can be done. And we thought that was a strong case to say, you know, the city is not prohibiting something that the state permits, that the state basically puts a hands-off to industry on that issue. She disagreed. She feels that the state does regulate hydraulic fracturing, so that would be an issue that would go up on appeal, and that's really more of a legal issue. Does the state, yes or no, authorize hydraulic fracturing? So that would be an issue, probably number two, that we would bring up. The third issue is, is there any way for the oil and gas industry to produce oil and gas without hydraulic fracturing? We found an engineer who provided a statement to the court that said, yes, you know, there are other techniques. We found oil and gas records at the commission that showed many wells in Colorado have been drilled. Remember, drilling in this state has occurred since eighteen sixty, and there have been many wells drilled since eighteen sixty that were not hydraulic fracture. They were produced under natural pressure. So the question of whether there is a quote "operational conflict" really goes to, can you drill oil and gas wells and get a return without hydraulic fracturing? We had evidence that said, yes, you can. It all sort of boils down to whether the court should have given the city a full trial on all of these issues. And while there are three issues, the primary issue will be, did the court make a hasty decision without a full record on the issues? And even the nineteen ninety-two decisions from the Colorado Supreme Court seem to indicate that the city should have been given a full evidentiary hearing. I'll say this, that anytime you lose at the district court level, it's an uphill climb. It's a challenge, and it's one that you'd rather be on the other side. But we know that we did about as good a job as we can do to prepare the record so that when the next level of court gets it, they will be able to decide that there are or there are not these disputed issues. And Judge Mallard, I think, indicated in oral argument, she says, "I think what you're asking me to do on many of these issues is something that's above my pay grade." So I do feel in some way she was inviting whoever lost, and here's the city, to take this up to the next level. Maybe it's time to, you know, establish some new law. But at the least, I think she wanted a direction from the appellate court before she had this two-week trial that was staring her in the face. So I can't, again, tell you whether to appeal or not, I can tell you that those are the parameters that would be considered if there is an appeal. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'll sit down and shut up.
I do not have a question, but I would like to-
Mr. Kramer reminded me that there is yet another slide that I did not get to, pluses and minuses. I sort of touched on these, or Dan Kramer did. The pluses of appealing are that the judge's ruling would probably stay in effect for somewhere between two and five years. So remember, the process would be, first, there would be an appeal of this decision. If the city prevails and the appellate court determines that she did make a hasty decision, the case comes back to her and she would have a trial. And whoever wins or loses, whoever loses at that trial would probably appeal as well. So we're looking at a period of two to five years where the ban would probably stay in place. Another plus, we've heard a lot of discussion tonight about this was a citizen-approved charter provision, and the city council has been asked to uphold that vote. And I think another plus that we've identified here is, you don't know what's going to happen on appeal. You don't know what an appellate court will do. So it's a possibility, again, I think this is a challenging case, always have thought that. It's a possibility where a higher court, as Judge Mallard said, could make a different decision. Negative, it's an uphill battle to prevail at the end of the day. After this appeal, if it comes back down and we have another trial, it's still not assured that the city would win. Dan Kramer referred to this idea of implied preemption, and in plain English, what that means is that a court could decide that the oil and gas commission completely controls all aspects of regulation in the state of Colorado insofar as oil and gas is concerned. A Fort Collins court has recently made a decision essentially saying that, Judge Mallard did not, but if this went up on appeal, we don't know that the decision wouldn't be more akin to Fort Collins than it is to Judge Mallard's decision. It's an expensive, expensive proposition for the city. We've done our best to estimate just the cost of the appeal, and this would take into account not only the court of appeals, but a potential appeal to the Colorado Supreme Court, seventy-five to one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The cost of trial, if the city won those appeals and had already spent the seventy-five to one-hundred-and-fifty, would be another two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for experts, for lawyers, for all of the costs that are attendant to a case, audiovisual, the whole nine yards. And it could take years, in fact, it will take years of litigation if this case continues. It's not going to end anytime soon if the city decides to appeal. So those are the positives and negatives, and I appreciate Mr. Kramer pointing that out to me. And somebody was about to ask a question, I'm sorry I cut you off.
I was not going to ask a question, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. I thought I'd find a good motion.
This will surprise some people, but I would like to move that we appeal the case in question, and we should also prepare to take it all the way to the Supreme Court. There's a need for clarity on the issue. That's the reason I am supporting this. We need, there's a need for clarity on both sides, quite frankly, and the only way we can end the debate is to take it all the way. I also think we need to ask other communities that have similar interests to join our case. They should join our case not only financially but with amicus briefs. And when I mentioned this to a county commissioner last week, she seemed to think that it was something worth exploring, so I really think we need to do that. We can't do this alone, we need to have them in this with us. So let's ask the county, Lafayette, Fort Collins, Boulder, to join us, and let's clear this up.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's consecutive by Councilmember Jeff Moore. Councilmember Christensen.
I would like to echo Barney Finley. I think this is something we really must appeal. We've got to defend our charter, not just once, but always, so I think that's what we need to do, and I think that her suggestion that we try to find as much of, as broad a coalition to help us with this on a statewide basis and on a countywide basis is the way to go, because otherwise we will continue to get attacked, and so that's all I have to say. But I would also like to point out, if you look at this map that we have, and it's a six-inch diameter circle around each of these yellow things, you will see that Longmont, every area but a tiny area of the northwest, every single body of water, every area of Longmont will be fracked if we allow this to go through.
Thanks. Could I please ask you to hold your applause? Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion, but I also want to say how appreciative I am of everyone coming out and speaking tonight. While you think that everything, sometimes in government seems to be a foregone conclusion, I appreciate the preparation everyone did to prepare for tonight, to speak, and I learned stuff from you. And I appreciate you coming out here, and I appreciate that I'm here in this chair to listen to you. And I also think that when you look at these appeals, there have been some pretty famous appeals that have been given no hope and no chance. And it has, those are the kind of appeals that fundamentally change laws and change the environment in our country. So I appreciate all your support and the support of other council members.
Councilmember Daly. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's always a good night when we talk about fracking. The, I say that tongue-in-cheek, but also I see many of my old friends over the last couple of years. The only thing I disagree with is some of the comments that indicate that council, regardless of what side of the political aisle you sit on, has not been representing the community, or we've got no spine, or, on the contrary, you know, I'm quite proud to say that Longmont City Council, and, I mean, we were kind of the domino, the regs debate and that whole fiasco, kind of what led, that's what led to the local citizens deciding to put the fracking ban on the ballot. And then that started the fight, and I believe city council's done a great job carrying the battle, carrying the fight and pushing on, and we will continue to serve. And so for that reason, I also plan on voting for the appeal.
Councilmember Moore. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's just the first shot in the battle in my mind. This is a war. We don't win, win or lose a war on one battle. And it's time for us to continue to fight this fight, and I do agree with Councilmember Finley that we're not the only ones in this, but we're, up to this point, we've been fighting it alone. And I think it's through our leadership and our commitment to this, to this issue has created the wherewithal for the other communities to fall in line behind us. Now let's get them out in front of us and felt with us and make a bigger statement for the legislature to actually do something about this moving forward, so.
I'd like to say, first, I'm really proud of our legal team, I thought they did a great job through this whole thing. I think we have a great legal staff. I also am proud of the citizens' engagement, although sometimes they get carried away. But- But, anyway, I have total confidence that both the councils that I've served on now have been great councils, and I really like my council teammates. Sometimes we don't always agree with each other. Sometimes we think we should go slightly different paths from point A to point B, but this is a great council, and I'm really proud of my teammates. And so, anyway, I guess it's now it's time to vote.
(audience applauding)
Do you want to get introduced?
Yes, so are you ready for consent?
Absolutely.
Is that where we're going first?
Yeah. Okay, we'll go back to the consent. Back to regular order.
Okay. Do you want me to-
Okay, we're resuming the meeting, and we're going to start with the consent agenda.
If your next item is consent, the first item on that is ordinance 201446, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city at Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. Public hearing and second reading for this is scheduled for September 9th. Item 9B is ordinance 201447, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Royal Park rezoning from mixed-use CMU to public, generally located north of the St. Rain River, west of Main Street, south of Boston Avenue, and east of Pratt Parkway. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for September 9th. Item 9C is ordinance 201448, a bill for an ordinance amending Title IV of the Longmont Municipal Code on Revenue and Finance by creating the Village at Peeks, at the Peaks COP Special Revenue Fund. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for September 9th. Item 9D is resolution 201474, urging Longmont citizens to vote yes on Longmont ballot issue 2A, the extension of the existing three-quarters of ascent-street system maintenance and improvement sales and use tax on the November 4, 2014 general coordinated election ballot. Item 9E is resolution 201475, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Colorado Department of Local Affairs for a flood recovery staffing assistance grant. Item 9F is resolution 201476, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County Housing Authority for its housing and community education program. Item 9G is resolution 201477, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its Circles Program. And item 9H is resolution 201478, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the State Board of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund for grant funding for the Longmont recovery, flood recovery. And we do not have any items to pull as staff.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move the consent agenda, removing nothing.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. I guess let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is General Business 11B, presentation of the 2015 proposed budget and the 2015-19 proposed capital improvement program, and Harold Dominguez will make this presentation.
Mayor Council, actually, it'll be Harold and Jim moving through this potentially. So I know you've all had a relatively long night so far, so we'll try to move through. Presenting you all with the budget today, as you know, what we do tonight is we present you all with the budget, and then over the next few meetings, we will go more in-depth into the budget itself. But today, we wanted to provide an overview. If you look at the 2015 proposed budget, it is two-hundred-and-seventy-five-point-eight million, or two, or a two-point-two-seven percent decrease from the 2014 budget, which was two-hundred-and-eighty-two million dollars. Of that amount, thirty-five-point-two is fund balances that will be drawn down for capital needs. We are looking at fee increases potentially for golf and water services. What I want to bring your attention to is the golf board has been reviewing the golf fees recently, and then on the water side, our water department has undergone, they have gone through a study that looks at the capital needs over the next twenty years. And as we move through the budget process, Dale Radamaker and his staff will be presenting that information to council for you all to discuss. And as, as you know, there was a fee increase approved in 2012 for sewer services. When we look at the 2015 proposed budget, sales and use tax growth is the primary driver for this budget. The budget does assume a four-point-nine-nine percent growth in sales and use tax for 2014 and a three-point-one-six percent growth in 2015. As Jim indicated during the presentation on the priority-based budgeting process, the general fund budget recent gap has dropped from two-point-five million to one-point-seven million, and that's pending decisions by city council and requests for council one-time dollars. As you know, we bring that to the council for you all to consider every year, and so that could impact that dollar amount. Sales and use tax between the general fund and the public improvement fund, as you recall, last year we had a discussion on this, and the fact that we weren't bringing the dollars into the public improvement fund that we normally bring in, which it was causing some concern on the capital improvement side. We have made an adjustment this year as we start shifting to try to get that back to its normal allocation. As we look at the proposed budget, we're looking at pay increases accorded, in accordance with the city policy. The collective bargaining agreements, a two-point-five percent for police and one-point-seven-five percent for fire. And then we're also looking at the step position increase in LPC at three-point-three percent. We're looking up to a five percent increase for other employees that are below the market, and so that's been something that we have been working on consistently in the organization, or a fifteen-hundred-dollar one-time payment for other employees that are above the market. And as council will recall, we had that discussion with you about the market component during the council retreat. In the proposed budget, we are eliminating five FTEs, two from closing the print shop, two from the reorganization of the Economic Development Services, and one FTE from recreation after-school programs. Again, Jim mentioned the after-school program during the last presentation, and Karen went up and gave more, gave more specifics on that. That has to do with the fact that the individual's no longer with us, and then the school's taking more of an interest in performing those activities. When we look at the proposed budget, there are twenty-five-point-seven-five new FTEs in this proposed budget, eight-point-seven-five from the general fund. We will go over this in more detail. A number of those are actually conversions that occurred from temporary salaries and pulling funds from other locations to convert that into personnel. There are three positions that aren't conversions. One is the, a position in the museum to help with the new auditorium that we're building and marketing that facility. Another one is a sales tax position, which is projected to be paid for via the sales tax and auditing they do. And another one is a budget position that will work as we continue to embrace the priority-based budgeting and work within our system. As you can see, a number of them are related to the electric and broadband fund. We are in the middle of staffing up for that activity right now, and in the fall, we will look at, hopefully, the implementation of that service. And then we have others from fleet, storm drainage, and then water, wastewater, and the storm drainage fund, and some of that's related to the activities that we have going on now. One of the things that we really talked about that we needed to focus on during the budget process was dealing with the ongoing expenses that were funded with one-time funds. And this year, we were able to present a budget that managed that issue. So the early childhood collaboration and alignment, the code enforcement, neighborhood revitalization, multicultural action plan, and the substandard housing, housing-first mental health contract, those were all, we were able to move those into the ongoing budget, ongoing budget for this year. And that, that accounted for the difference in, or the reset, or the lowering amount in the budget gap. As I indicated earlier, the Stewart, Stewart Auditorium is proposed to open in 2015, and what council will see that you've received three-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars in council one-time expenses that will be presented to you during this year's budget process. In addition, there were some comments earlier and publicly invited to be heard about some of the needs in the social service sectors of our community. And what I wanted to say is that we also project that the health and human service funding will increase by forty-one thousand this year. And if you councilor members, that was a discussion we had based on the allocation of that percentage, or of those dollars. There's fifty-seven-point-four million in CIP projects this year. Obviously, the citywide fiber deprimis build-out is fifteen-point-six, and it's a major project that we're working on. The St. Rain channel improvements are six-point-four million, and then the Greenway, three-point-two million. The channel improvements are a bond project, and the Greenway's a flood project, but essentially those are both related to the flood and the recovery process. Dickens Park is in there for eight-point-eight million. If you will remember, we delayed that project from last year because of the damage, excuse me, that project has been reworked, and they're getting ready for implementation on that. The street rehabilitation program is another one, and you will get more details on all of this. Wastewater, water, and then the Quell Campus master plan improvements. That is all I have in presenting the overview of the budget. As I said earlier, we will go over this in more detail. As you look through this, if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call us, so we can move through that with you all and answer your questions. And it'll be a fun few weeks of budget discussions as we move into the council meetings in September. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Lawson.
I know you do this every year in the budget. Do you have a page where you're asking or you're proposing to go over just certain parts of the budget, and then are you going to want us then to, you know, if we have something that pertains to that area of the budget, to bring that up ahead of time if we can? Do you have that schedule already printed out, as part of the budget?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, members of council, there is a schedule at the end of the budget message that lays out four weeks of meetings and what we're planning in general. We may be adding more things to that as we go along, based on your requests or things we may have overlooked. But by all means, send us your questions in advance, or if we, if something comes up afterwards, you want to send us a question afterward, we'll respond to it to the whole council in the next council packet.
Great, thank you.
So my question is, you know, you have this projection of four-point-nine-nine percent increase in sales and use tax. Why not just grow it up to five? I mean, since it's just a projection anyway.
This, this, Mayor, this just shows you-
This, Mayor, this just shows you that this is really a science. We put some time and effort into it, and each of the different categories has a different projection, and you know what? It'll add it up to 4.99. I just put 5% on the slide, but I said, no, I'll go with 1.
All right, thank you. I guess I don't see any further questions.
Mayor, members of council, I just want to acknowledge Teresa's efforts, Teresa and the budget staff, Teresa Mulroney, the budget manager, for putting this together. You know, this is August 26th, which is probably about the earliest we've ever had to present the budget since, you know, we have to do it before September 1st, and this is pretty far in front of the 1st. You can't get any earlier than the 26th, I think. And so, it actually puts a pretty big crunch on the budget office, and I can tell you, we finished putting together the budget message at around 4:30 or something today. So, I'm sure you'll find errors, but if so, we'll get them corrected and know that we have put a lot of effort into this, and we're looking forward to working with you all over the next month on it, so.
I actually wanted to jump in and also commend Jim on the work that he's been doing on this. What a lot of people don't realize is that in the middle of all of this work, we had a couple of debt issuances. We're in the middle of a HATS project where we're bringing in a new financial system and then putting together the budget in addition to dealing with just the normal day-to-day operations. So, a tremendous amount of work that's gone into this process. And I will also talk about the timing. We had a conversation where I think last year, I said, I would really like to have revenue estimates early, so when we're going through the budget reviews, that we could have a sense. And they made it. They got the revenue estimates early for us to look at. And so, they moved with speed and accuracy in this process, which is really always good to see when you're putting together this budget. So, again, a big thank you to Jim, Teresa, and is it Melanie? Melody. Melody. We have a Melanie and a Melody, so I get the name, the Melody, and everyone that worked on this project, because it was great work. And again, we look forward to having the more in-depth conversations as we continue in this process.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just would like to request a hard copy of the budget.
Can I ask any other questions? Thank you very much for your hard work. Now, it's time for final call, public invited here, as the individual in public that would like to speak at this time.
Dale, come on down. What are you requesting?
Okay, same here. Close the call, public invited here. So, now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm looking for my business of the week. They had sent me an article, and I wanted to make sure I had the information right. Gosh, now I can't find it.
Councilmember Santos, thank you, Mayor Coombs. This past Wednesday, I traveled to Boston for the National League of Cities Hispanic-Elected Local Officials Retreat. Hilo is looking to expand its membership of not only Hispanic-Elected Local Officials, but local officials who represent Hispanic constituents. So, that includes all of you. So, while I'm the, again, Hispanic-Elected Local Official, and while we do have other, you all, yeah, thank you, councilmember, yes, I am Hispanic, councilmember Bagley. But the constituency groups are, you know, of course, very important to the National League of Cities. And while several of you are on other committees of the National League of Cities, we are looking, again, to expand that. There is a, there is a membership fee too, that's $50 for one year. If you know of other council members throughout in your other boards and commissions outside of the city, that would, if you feel that would be well-represented in Hilo, please send them my way. Or if you would like, you could join yourselves. We do meet at the National League of Cities in March in Washington, DC, and we will be meeting in Austin. I'd like to thank LPC, Longmont Parent Communications, they were a sponsor for our retreat. We really do appreciate that. We did have some breakout sessions on social media. Verizon also had a very interesting breakout session on communications. So, thank you for council, for those members of council that don't use their travel funds, I really did appreciate that. And, yeah, councilmember Bagley especially, he doesn't travel as much, but thank you very much.
You can have my, my cradle, just don't worry. Much more.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I found my business of the week. It is the Longmont Compass. For the past four months, three longtime Longmont residents and local business owners have been building a website that's designed to showcase everything that our great city has to offer. It's called the Longmont Compass, and as they put it, if it's in Longmont, it's in there. It has a comprehensive events calendar with specific calendars for music and kids and arts and food. And they, you know, have everything you could want to know about Longmont, and it's on Longmont Compass. Check them out.
Those lives, September 1st.
Yes, it does.
Councilmember Christmas.
Now, this is a business of the week, but speaking of Hispanic representation, I just wanted to remind people that in September, on the 11th, over on the Boulder, senior Boulder campus, it is the, I think, the first America's Latino Eco Festival. And it's about environmentalism, and it's sponsored by, it's posted by a coalition of Latino organizations, and I think it'll be very interesting. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also gonna mention the event that I mentioned a couple of weeks ago. It's tomorrow. I hope some people are coming for the Business Summit on Early Education and Workforce. And it's going to be at the Gate House in Lafayette, and I imagine they still have a little bit of room. If anybody has time tomorrow morning, the event begins at 7:30 and goes until 9:00. And there'll be speakers, including Stan Garnett, our Boulder County District Attorney. And I want to thank the Times Call for sponsoring this event. It's also being held in conjunction with many other partners, including the United Way, Foothills United Way. The other thing I would like to mention is how successful, even though it was threatening rain, Festival on Main was this weekend. And I know that there was a big bicycle event. Everything seemed to run very smoothly this weekend in Longmont. Even the weather sort of cooperated for Festival on Main. So, I want to thank all the city staff and all the groups that went out there and made the festival such a great event, especially Downtown Development Authority coordinated everything. And I also want to congratulate the Longmont Area Economic Council for their community appreciation luncheon. Those luncheons are always very interesting to learn about the connection with the business community and our nonprofits, and how dedicated the business community is to supporting a very broad spectrum of nonprofits. So, congratulate everyone who was acknowledged and nominated, and a great article in the Times Call. Tell me.
Councilmember Santos. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Some things you can add, but our ITC, committee meeting, phone call meeting today, US ranks sixth in the world as far as being connected to, having the people connected to broadband. It's kind of a bad place to be, and we're actually losing ground there. So, Longmont's leading the way here again. I'd also like to point out that the climate period for the FCC to bring comments about Chattanooga, Tennessee, and Wilson, North Carolina's broadband efforts, and about how they're being pressured to back out of the industry, I guess, we should probably support that. We don't want Comcast, the world, coming after us in the future. I'm not exactly sure what there are, the issues are, but I think that states like Tennessee and North Carolina are looking to close further broadband, municipal broadband efforts in their states. And it's actually, it's a concerted effort across the US. The gentleman from Verizon told me he was hired to prevent municipal broadband from happening. So, this is something that we can get behind, because this is where we're going, and I would hope that we could show some support for those two cities, and those two states. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I want to realize the ribbon cutting at the YMCA today for a new STEM classroom, so I'd like to thank all the private citizens and the Longmont Chamber and a lot of the local businesses that contributed funds for that STEM classroom to open. So, this is just a very generous, caring community, and I just see examples of it all the time. I'm just really proud of the citizens of Longmont. Yeah, but what I did almost forgot about, but I didn't want to share that story now. Okay, well, I was, we had coffee with council Saturday morning, and, you know, it starts at nine, goes to 10, and I knew that we had early afternoon thunderstorms predicted. And I also had this four-hour training ride on my schedule. So, as soon as I got done, I ripped out on my bike and went up to Carter Lake, and, you know, it's way up north, and then coming back, and boy, the rain and the thunder and lightning, and it's like, well, you can't get any wetter. It's actually kind of fun. But, yeah, I got soaked. So, anyway, I guess that ends mayor and council comments. So, city manager, any remarks?
No comments, mayor and council.
City attorney, any remarks?
Mayor and council, to councilmember Moore's comment about the FCC proceedings on broadband. We were working with a Colorado Communication Utility Alliance to submit comments. They wanted to tell the story here in Longmont, so we worked with Ken Feldman, who's been special counsel with us, to tell the Longmont story and how SB 152 created barriers to providing telecom and broadband services to the citizens of Longmont. So, we are gonna be part of that. We are part of the alliance, but we did work with them to get the Longmont story, and that's it.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And councilmember Moore, Hilo was asked to take a position on that as well, and we're trying to figure out a way to do that, because usually, it comes to us later. So, just to let you know, the NLC constituency group is looking at that as well.
All right, I guess this meeting has adjourned.